Good morning, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting this morning of the School Board of Manatee County. It is July 18th, 2023, and although typically it's a beautiful morning here in Manatee County, it is a wet one this morning. So I want to go ahead and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You very much. I want to move to agenda amendments. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the July 18th, 2023 Agenda, updated July 13th, 2023, and posted on the district website, manteschools.net. Do we have a motion to accept those amendments?
Some moved.
It sounded like we had a motion, and one of those can be a second as well?
Second.
All right. We can go ahead and cast your vote on Granicus.
Did you put my vote in for me? I'm not in yet.
That's all right. That amendments pass five to zero. Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Some moved.
The motion?
I'll second.
And a second to approve the agenda. And we can go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda now.
Almost there. I'm voting.
You're good. You're good. All right. That motion passes five to zero. Moving on to public comments. Any public comments at all? No? So skipping public comments. Moving on to item number six, new business, which is why we're here for today. Approval to advertise a notice of public hearing to adopt tentative millages and tentative budget for fiscal year 2324. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation for us?
Good morning, Chairman. Yes, I recommend approval to advertise a notice of public hearing to adopt tentative millages and a tentative budget for fiscal year 202324.
Some moved.
That was in sync.
All right. Well, I guess I'm seconding.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Sellers would like to come up. And congratulations, Dr. Weisong, on your very first recommendation.
It was a good one.
You did well.
It's one to fund us. Thank you.
Well, good morning. All right. So there's a section in the Florida statute that governs adoption of the millage rate. And this is called the Truth in Millage, TRIM. And it gives a specific short timeline. So starting on July 1st is when the district receives the certified tax value from the tax collector. And then by July 19, DOE is to use that information to recalculate the required local effort to the district, and which then starts a lot of finishing work that the district does behind the scenes to be able to have the next timeframe, which is in 24 days from July 1st. The board is required to authorize the district to run an ad of the millage rate. And so this year, we plan to run that ad on July 21st, this coming up Friday. And so we need the board today to authorize us to run that advertisement. And the real purpose of the advertisement is to notify the taxpayers of the public hearing that we will have next week on Tuesday, July 25, to present the tentative millage rates and the discussion of the tentative budget. So today's action is to go ahead with the authorization to run the advertisement. This kicks off the official budget process. So after that, once we get the information from DOE as far as what the recalculated local effort is, we then will submit the ad to the newspaper the morning of July 20 for publishing on the 21st. And by that afternoon, we are expecting to be able to provide to the board that tentative budget book. And we can have it downloaded into the system, and we can also have it emailed to you guys, along with the PowerPoint in peak for board review. And so the paper copy we're expecting will probably be available on Monday, July 24th, since the district has closed this Friday on the 21st.
The only thing I've, I mean, we, as a DOE guaranteed they're going to give us that information?
Yes, they're required by statute to have it done, and they always do it. So it usually comes in at the end of that date. So on the end of July 19th, we'll start working with that. And we have given you guys the copies, handouts of those particular ad that we'll run. You'll notice some red notations on it. We've already given it to the Department of Revenue to do their review. And the only thing pending now is they understand that that RLE is something that's going to be provided to us on the 19th. We'll then submit it back to them before we send it to publishing. And they've been, Department of Revenue has been very quick to respond with their approval.
We have a couple board members lit up. You don't?
You basically asked what I was going to ask, and it was really about just the RLE and all that. You answered it. Thank you so much.
Mr. Tatum?
Good morning again, Ms. Sellers. So maybe you could explain, or even maybe Ms. Foreman or someone who's had more experience in this area. So I've been going to my FSBA finance conferences, learning all this stuff. But if we could look at the document that says Notice of Tax for School Capital Outlay. That was an attachment to the item here. So at the top, it says, "The school district committee of county Florida will consider a measure to continue to impose a 1.5 mil property tax for the capital outlay projects listed herein." This is a tax that is at our discretion to impose or not impose. However, if we don't impose it, then we don't get some type of matching funds from the state. Is that true or is that not true?
Correct. The district, to be able to get other millage money that does come through the state, we do have to advertise for the local millage. Otherwise, that we don't get our proportionate share.
Okay. So this is, well, we could choose not to, but if we don't, we lose out on a lot of state money, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. And then, "This tax is in addition to the school board's proposed tax of 4.992 mils for operating expenses and is proposed slowly, solely at the discretion of the school board." Whoever could roll in on this, whether it's a board member or you, that four point, and then in the note that we have here, it says, "We'll need to reconfirm required local effort millage from DOE." So just help me understand exactly what that tax is.
So that is, that is the rate that we are waiting for from the state. That's the required local effort millage portion. That's the, that the district is required to levy on the taxpayers.
Okay. To, along with the 1.5 mil, which is at our discretion to levy, because this says is proposed solely at the discretion of the school board. So we levy the 4.992, and then we levy the 1.5, and this is just our, and maybe Ms. Foreman, do you understand this?
Probably not as well as Ms. Sellers.
As Ms. Sellers does. Okay, great. I just know that you've been through this. So I'm just trying, I'm just making sure that I understand. So I can explain to the tax makers, because that comes out too, if I do my math, about six, about 6.4, 6.5.
Or something like that. So we have this plus that to get us to, and I think there's another summary that you'll end up seeing when you get the tentative budget. Because I think that it's like 6.492 in total. It's adding up all of the rest of them.
If I did the math right. Okay. So these are, these are millages that are at our discretion to impose. But if we don't impose them, then we lose out on what we might call matching state funding money. Is that correct?
Correct. That's a, that's a good, good note. Yes.
Okay. I just, and then how do we, and then this note here, it says, "We'll need to confirm RLE millage from DOE." What does that, I understand what the English words mean, but what is that exactly?
So that was the note that Department of Revenue provided when they reviewed our particular ads. That's the note that they indicated to us that once we get DOE's required local effort, that we'll send them this information back up. And that's basically to let them look to see if that one changes or not.
So that could change from, from 4.992 to some other?
To maybe up or down point one.
Point one or something like that. Okay. And then it says on the line below that, "The proposed combined school board tax increase for both operating expenses and capital outlay is shown in the adjacent notice." The capital outlay tax will generate about 103,930,554 dollars. And then we go on to talk about it. That's fine. So if we could go over to the Notice of Proposed Tax Increase, which is the other attachment. So why is it, when we say it's a Notice Proposed Tax Increase, are we, are we increasing, we're not increasing rates? Are we, why is it a tax increase? Just let me ask you that.
Okay. So this particular format is required in the statute to be able to give this particular information to the taxpayers. And it lets them know essentially at the start of what the proposed tax levy would be, and, and the adjustments that actually get made through an evaluation group, board, along with the, to get to the actual property levy taxes. And then there is a required, there's a required portion that is calculated that has to be presented, I believe it's like five tenths, yeah, five tenths of the, of the total proposed taxes has to be shown here. And that's just required to be presented this way by the state law, in state law.
So is this, is this increase from, so it says, "Last year's property tax levy, actual property tax levy was 390,901,084 dollars. And this year, 468,555,580." Is that essentially an increase in the overall value of property in the county that's being assessed at the same millage rates as it was last year?
The, the levy applied, okay, so the property value increased, and this is, would be the levy portion of that.
Levy portion of that. Okay. But I guess my question is?
Just remember, it's, the property value was 68 billion, but it's expected, the certified is 72 billion. So this is the tax levy on that.
Right. So the, the increase, it's like saying, whatever, let's just say it's 5%. The rate is not changing. It's just 5% of a bigger pot of money based on the total property value in the county, which will then give us an increase from 391 million to 468 million. So we're not raising property rates, but, but we are taking more tax money. But it's just the fact of, the math is X rate times a bigger pot of money gives us more money. Okay?
Correct.
I'm just making sure that it's, that people understand that we're not increasing the tax rates, but the percentage times a bigger pot of money gives us a bigger, a bigger amount. And I'm understanding it myself, too, to make sure I can explain it to everybody. Okay, great. That's what I wanted to get clear. Thank you very much.
Good?
Yes, I'm good.
Ms. Breck?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I was just gonna go from what he was saying. On the RLE, on the budget summary, it has 3.2440. What, is there any kind of projection that we can get what that might be at all?
It could go up like point one or down point one. It's, that's the one that will change.
It's not going to be a huge increase, do you think?
From the, it'll be, I'm expecting it to be within this ballpark.
Okay.
But this was, this particular local effort was based on when they had the property value at 68 billion, and it's now 72.
78 billion. Okay, okay. And based on the check marks on the same budget summary, we have the RLE, the capital of 1.5. And then on the right side, we have the discretionary operating of 0.78. And then the millage that was adopted for 1.0. Am I reading that correct? So the only number we're waiting on is for the DOE.
Right.
Is that typical?
Only number we're waiting on. And then that will affect the budget that we have in the tentative book, which is why that one's being held till we can circulate that, those calculations through.
All the way through the, all the works. Okay. Are they always the last one to get their number out, from what I'm understanding? Yeah? Okay. Okay. So the actual increase in funding is because our houses, the value of our houses have gone up. Am I understanding that correct after the conversation there?
Yes.
Okay. That was my whole assessment as well. So, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foreman?
Yeah, I just want to try to understand why we are waiting on a required local effort. I thought that was set.
That, well, it's July 19 is when they, so once they, once they, the July 1 certified taxable value came out, DOE has a, has its timeline in the statute to be able to recalculate that particular percentage until July 19.
So everybody in the state is waiting on that same thing?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of people will be calling on the 19th, "Hey, did you get it?"
So if value goes, if value goes up, they may come down in the, our number.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So it only goes, so it only goes down. Hopefully, hopefully it doesn't go down more than like point one or something. But we'll see. We'll see what happens.
Okay. When we had our discussion before, you know, I know a year ago that if a home had the save our schools 3% cap, their property tax actually did not go up because our increase in, in taxes was below 3%. Gina, can you shake your head yes or no?
And you have laws that save our homes.
Right.
And so it does have more.
Right. But, so if, if our increase was more than, was less than 3%, they actually paid less in dollars to the, to the districts, to school taxes. But based on our conversation, our discussion at a prior workshop, it looks like that's not going to be the case this year, that actually it's going to, because the state is requiring more of the, yes, dollars going to school districts has gone up, but the proportion, the state's share is coming down and the locals going up. So actually, am I correct to say that if you have a 3% save our school, or save our homes, that we're going to pay more, a little bit more, because it's more than 3% increase?
I remember them mentioning that at that conference that we were at. I, I do not know for sure if that cap works that way this particular year. We can look into that.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Oh, there we go.
I don't know for sure, but I don't think the cap works on school taxes. It's just county. I'm just throwing that out. We have, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, I looked at my own property taxes, and I did pay less to the, to the school district last year, but I will double check. That's, that's, that's a good one.
Interesting.
That's it. Thanks.
Ms. Messenger?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing. Last year, the, the millage, total millage levy that this board imposed was five point, or 6.522. So this is less than that, this proposed, and it'll probably go down more, let's be honest. It'll go down more. So that, I just wanted to point that out. It was 6.522 last year, and the required local effort last year was 3.2740. So that, that's, you can see, that's where it went down. But I just wanted to make sure the board was aware. So the, the increase is because there are more houses. And, and that's really where that tax increase is coming from, because the millage rate has gone down, has gone down every year. Even when the one mil got put in place, it went down so that that one mil was only worth 0.72 that year because it went down that much that year after the one mil was voted on. So I just wanted to make sure that that was really clear, that every year it goes down, and more houses come to Manatee County, and that's where that additional revenue is coming from. Of course, that also brings more children. But I just wanted to point that out, that the, the millage rate has, has decreased, and it'll probably decrease even more from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you lit up again?
Yes, please, if I could. So in, I was going to ask that question, what was last year's required local effort? But it was actually higher than this year's required local effort.
6.522.
And, and your experience has?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's the total. The required local effort, I'm sorry, was 3.274.
We actually had mentioned that in the budget workshop, too, we were showing, or projecting where we had it at the 3.244 dropping as well, too. So.
So are you, Ms. Sellers, are you knowledgeable enough, are the words that come to my mind? I mean, nobody knows everything about their job, but to explain how it is that this local required effort is calculated, calculated by the state?
I believe how it is, is they get the total of the taxes up there, but then this is part of, I believe, how they look at the equitable method. And I believe that part of that ends up going into, in the direction of maybe another district instead. But I don't think I can eloquently, but, but I knew that we don't get as much as that actually goes up there from, from this particular area coming back to here.
Correct.
If that helps make the, the end result.
So do they take, so do they look at like all the money that Manatee County is supposed to get for budget, for their budget, and then say, "This is how much money you're going to get." And so to get that, to get that amount of money that we say you're going to get, this is the amount of money that you have to pay up to the state to get, you know, when I say you, the taxpayers of the county have to pay to, because the taxpayers actually pay the money to the state, money, the state takes the money and then gives it, gives it back to us. So are they looking at like FT, how many students we have and what our FTE is, and what our transportation costs are, and all those?
Yes. And I think that a percentage of like 96% or so ends up getting, is what we end up budgeting to, not the whole 100% when it comes time to that, to be able to look at that, to see if it goes into, don't know exactly how they do it from their end, but, but I do think it's, it's just a percentage. It's not the 100% when it goes to that route. And remember, we still had other factors that they were looking in when we were looking at the other particular revenue sources. But, you know, I was getting ready to mix the BSA in there, and that's not this part of it. So anyhow, but, yeah, but I could look into that a little bit more and be able to get it back to you.
It's very, it's very technical.
Yes. And I can look for that a little bit better because I have read it up, but I can't bring to mind to be able to explain it, how they come up with that RLE. But I can get that.
Okay. And in actuality, I, the first comments I made said that we're not raising rates, but we're actually lowering rates. It's slight, it's very slight within the thousands of a percent, but they are actually coming down a little bit from, from last year. So.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. I'm just trying to get smarter on all this stuff.
Yes.
Every day, a little bit more.
Just to go back to the RLE, is different for every district?
Yes.
That's all? I, I'm like, okay, it's, that, because you said something, everybody's waiting. Did you get it? Did you get yours? Did you get it? So it's actually different for every district. That's? So it's actually different for every district, that's, I want to just confirm that. Okay, that's all.
And it is just, it is different because, like you said, to, the state law says that equitable funding has to be provided to every, in theory, student in the state. So counties that have high property taxes paying a little bit more, counties that have low property tax base value paying a little bit less, and then the state equals that all out. And so that's why you said we get back, we pay in more than we get back, because we're over the threshold, so to speak, of, we have to fund some other.
They'll come to give, the state will end up in other different pots, they will be able to help those other districts where this, this property value will be able to help this particular county more, which is why in some other categories, we might not get as much as some of those because of that particular calculation.
Correct. I mean, if, you know, you, you look at a county that doesn't have the tax base like we have, we're giving those counties money from, and that's what's something that, we talked about the Greater Consortium, the, like those, what, 15 of us, I think, are in that consortium, come up with like more than 50%, right around like 52% of the actual money that goes to education comes from like 15 counties, like 52% of it. So, we all, we, yeah, come together and give everybody, did you have something else?
Yeah, I, I was really curious about what Mr. Dice said, so I pulled up, and actually, it's, the Save Our School cap applies for school districts, but the extra $25,000 property tax exemption does not. So, anyway, so, so you're right, we're, you know, you pay more.
New schools got extra taxes even if you had that cap.
Yeah, but, but it's not as horrible as losing the Save Our Schools, so, it's interesting.
All right, so it looks like nobody else has let up to speak, so we can go ahead and vote on the approval to advertise a notice of public hearing to adopt the tentative millages and tentative budget for fiscal year 23, 24. And that passes unanimously, thank you all very much.
Can I ask one question? Came up in a board briefing yesterday, the, the budget book. Were you gonna ask how we prefer the budget book? Do we want to wait, or?
What we could do is, if you wanted, after we get, once we get that, the RLE, we need to make sure we get that ad into the newspaper, so it's published on time, and then we'll update that book. We can have it, what we're hoping to do is have it on the 20th in the afternoon, available as a PDF. And if, if we can, if we can try to get it to print, we would let you guys know. But we know that we could at least get it to in a PDF form, but we could also see if we can't also print it in any way beforehand, just because we have been picking up a few other items to make sure, that we wanted to have the tentative pretty close to the final, and some of those things are going through too, along with our, the RLE. So if the dis, if the, if the board is good with a PDF copy by the 20th, on the 20th in the afternoon, we're gonna try our best to get that.
You do not have to print out one for me, you can save the paper and all that, I'll watch it, I'll look at it on the-
And, and for those, if you'd like one?
Way more apt to look at it on my iPad and computer than I am, a big folder.
I, I think Ms. Brack does like that.
I like to print because I make notes.
Yes, so we can try to get that as quick as possible, and let you know when we can have it as quickly as possible.
Do we use our print shop to print that once we're done with that?
We usually try to do, yes, yes.
Okay, good.
How many pages is that in the seller, I mean, is it?
The 30, is it back and front, is it about 32 pages?
I would like a printed copy, then if it's just 32 pages.
Okay.
There's 3200 pages, and I wouldn't ask for it, but I'll take 32 pages.
But I'd like to start with a PDF, that'd be great.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
I don't need a printed copy.
Okay.
I'm totally finally looking it on the computer.
Okay, at least two, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Was that, was that called on mic?
I didn't hear it.
On item number two, I'm getting stares. Moving on to item number two, we're actually gonna break this apart, the approval of appointments, change of assignments, promotions, reappointments, and reassignments. We're actually gonna break this into three individual appointments slash hires slash promotions, et cetera. So Superintendent, would you give us a recommendation for the, I believe you have the right order as I do, the Deputy Superintendent of Instructional Services?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Choat and Board members. I recommend approval of Mr. Derek Jensen to serve as Deputy Superintendent of Instructional Services.
Thank you very much. We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion from anyone, I know, I do want to go back, I do want to go to the superintendent just to give us a little blurred biography on, on, on Mr. Jensen. I don't know if anyone else has any other questions, doesn't look like it.
Mr. Jensen currently leads all K through 12 teaching and learning initiatives for Seminole County Public Schools. He's been in that specific role for the last three years, where he has overseen the best standards transition, the transition to the fast assessments, all professional learning for faculty, and an overhaul of the system to support and retain new teachers in the district. Prior to that work, he was the founding administrator of a problem-solving incubator high school, or SI High, an innovative high school reform model that attracted outside funding to get the school open. Prior to that, he served as a digital and blended learning manager, leading curriculum innovation activities, and prior to that was a high school science teacher. Mr. Jensen has a bachelor's degree in science education and a master's degree in educational leadership, both from the University of Central Florida.
Thank you very much. I don't see any board members let up to speak, so, or ask any questions. So appreciate that information, I know you've shared it with us in our briefings. So we go ahead and vote for the approval of appointment, Mr. Derek Jensen as Deputy Superintendent of Instructional Services. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to number two, General Counsel.
Yes, I recommend approval of Ms. Pamela DiAgostino to serve as General Counsel of the School District of Manatee County.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and again, can you give us some information on Ms. DiAgostino?
Yes, thank you Chairman. Ms. DiAgostino currently serves as the Assistant County Attorney for Manatee County Government, a role that she's held for the past eight years. Prior to that, she served as Assistant State Attorney for the 12th Judicial Circuit, and was in that role for seven years. Her undergraduate degree is in business administration from Auburn University, and Ms. DiAgostino holds a JD from the Stetson University College of Law.
Thank you. We won't hold her being a war eagle over her. Ms. Foreman?
Yes, I'm going to be abstaining from this vote. I, as, as an employee, and the reason, I have to give a reason, and as an employee of the county, she gave a legal opinion on an agenda item coming up soon that directly impacts property that I own.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. All right, so any, no board members else are let up to speak, so if we can go ahead and vote on the approval of appointment to General Counsel, Ms. Pamela DiAgostino. And that passes four to zero with Ms. Foreman abstaining.
And we will get the opportunity to have a one-on-one with her, I guess?
Yeah, well, with everyone, yeah, with all of them, absolutely.
Okay, good, good.
And effective dates are in the, the, we, we see them obviously, and they're, they're in the packet for the, that the public has as well.
Okay.
And last but certainly not least, Deputy Superintendent of Operations.
Yes, Chairman Choat and Board members, I recommend approval of the promotion of Mr. Joseph Rinaldi to serve as Deputy Superintendent of Operations.
I'm moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Obviously, we know Mr. Rinaldi, but you can go ahead and give us some bio on him as well.
Yes, Board members, Mr. Rinaldi has held successful leadership positions in four school districts in the state of Florida, currently serving the School District of Manatee County as Chief Operations Officer for the past four years. In addition to all of his public service, Mr. Rinaldi had a successful 16 years in private practice in architecture and planning. His undergraduate degree is in architecture from the University of Cincinnati. Mr. Rinaldi also holds an MBA from Rollins College and maintains his professional certification as a licensed architect in the state of Florida.
Thank you very much. I see no board members let up to, to speak, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the promotion of Mr. Joseph Rinaldi to Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and that passes five to zero. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Rinaldi. And looking at my agenda, that is it for this morning. We will see each other again next week, as we convene for our normal
Thursday.
Meeting on Tuesday at 5 o'clock. See you all, have a good week, we adjourn.